Welcome to the March 19 meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilmember Bill Shacklet has someone I think he wants to introduce.
Yes, I do. I have a guest tonight for us, David Coggan with Barnabas Vision. He's gonna tell you a little bit about his ministry and what he's doing for our community, and he's gonna do our opening prayer for us. David?
Thank you, Councilman. My name is David Coggan. I'm with Barnabas Vision, which is a nonprofit in this community, and we help with various needs. We work together with other agencies to help the homeless, to help keep those in homes, and help with a variety of various needs in the community, to help people to a higher level. Will you please pray with me? Dear Heavenly Father, you're such an awesome, powerful, and mighty God. And Lord, I just thank you for this community and everybody who plays a part. And Lord, I ask you to be with the men and women in this room tonight, to be with this council, to be with Mayor McFarland as they lead, as they make decisions. Lord, we love you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of what labor did and does for all.
David, thank you so much for being here. And David, for many of us who participated in the Borough Dash, David was a great contributor, and they gave out a lot of cool bags that everyone, when they registered, got to fill up to give to different people in the community who are in need. So David, thank you for what your group is doing and what you're doing for Murfreesboro. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move into the consent agenda. You have one item on your consent agenda tonight.
No questions. I'd move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreik, we call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15012, amending the Murfreesboro City Code in regards to Thompson Lane Sanitary Sewer Special Assessment District, John Bragg, Overall Creek Sanitary Sewer Special Assessment District.
Move for passage, second.
We'll do this by voice vote. I'm sorry, we're not used to doing those. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We'll consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15013, amending the Murfreesboro City Code in regards to a sanitary sewer special assessment district at Overall Creek.
Move for passage, second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We'll consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15013, amending the Murfreesboro City Code in regards to a sanitary sewer special assessment district at Overall Creek.
Move for passage, second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We'll consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15014, amending the Murfreesboro City Code in regards to the Salem Highway and Barfield Sanitary Sewer Special Assessment District.
Move for passage, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We'll consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15015, amending the Murfreesboro City Code regarding the Buchanan and the Elam Road Interchanges Sanitary Sewer Assessment District.
Move for passage, second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15016, amending the Murfreesboro City Code in regard to the Osborne Lane Sanitary Sewer District.
Move for passage, second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15017, amending the Murfreesboro City Code in regards to the Three Rivers Special Sanitary Sewer Assessment District.
Move for passage, second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15018, amending the Murfreesboro City Code in regards to the Compton Road Special Sanitary Sewer Assessment District.
Move for passage, second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15019, amending the Murfreesboro City Code in regards to the Medical Center Parkway Special Sanitary Sewer Assessment District.
Move for passage, second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15020, amending the Murfreesboro City Code regarding the Rockvale Sanitary Sewer Assessment District.
Move for passage, second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15021, amending the Murfreesboro City Code in regard to the Salem Highway and Barfield Road Drainage Basin D Sanitary Sewer Assessment District.
Move for passage, second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15022, amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 33, Water and Sewers, in regard to the Pitts Lane Sanitary Sewer Assessment District.
Move for passage, second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Ms. McGinnon, we're not gonna have to go through those again, will we?
No, sir.
Okay. Second readings. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 150806 to annex an area at 4439 Manson Pike and adopt for the same a plan of services.
Move for passage, second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreik, we'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Doug was emphatic on that one. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 150807 to annex an area along the east side of Elam Road and to adopt for the same a plan of services.
Move for passage on second reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreik, we'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 150Z08 to rezone 0.7 acres along the east side of Elam Road to residential multifamily 16 district and to zone approximately 7.78 acres along the east side of Elam Road as residential multifamily 16 district simultaneous with annexation.
Move passage on second reading.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Schreik, we'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 15010, amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Penexase zoning, Section 34, Article 4, regarding the flood zone administrator.
Move for passage, second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreik?
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to new business. Conduct a public hearing and consider for approval of certificate of compliance for Tegel Patel at Meadows Liquors, 4205B Manson Pike.
Counsel, this is a certificate for an existing liquor store ownership change. The applicant has met our requirements, and we recommend approval of this so they can move along to the state level.
Any questions? Okay, we'll now open the public hearing and consider for approval of certificate of compliance for Meadows Liquors. Seeing no one to speak, we'll close the public hearing and consider this recommendation.
Move for passage, second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreik, we'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider for renewal of certificate of compliance for Timothy Miles and Brandy Miles at Chill Wines and Spirits, 2445 Memorial Boulevard, Suite D.
Counsel, this is a request for a renewal as per the state law to do this every two years. We recommend approval. This application was in order.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreik?
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We're having trouble with ayes tonight. All right, we'll now consider recommendation of the Airport Commission. Mr. Gurke, good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good to see you. On March 10, the airport received three bids for the runway extension and lighting project. The low bid was from LoJack Enterprises for $4,543,363.50. Darren Duckworth with Atkins performed a very thorough bid analysis and found this to all to be in order. The Airport Commission considered this at their last meeting on Monday and reviewed this and found it in order and recommends approval of this low bid received from LoJack.
What kind of timeframe you got on this, Mr. Gurke?
We're gonna start this April, and our goal is to be done before MTSU gets into the fall semester, so the end of August. We have about 135 days. We're gonna go about this in about three phases. The first phase will require that we'll be working at night for about 35 days, so we'll shut down the runway at night while crews work on the interior part between the runway and the taxiway. Then we're gonna go into a phase where the runway will be a little shorter for a while so that we can have all our crews working all the time on the north end. The final phase will be a complete shutdown of the runway, and we hope to complete that shutdown in about a three-week period, paving from one end to the other. And also, there'll be other paving going on for some of the new taxiways and things like that. So that should take us to about August 18th, 19th, right before MTSU starts.
I've had good experience with LoJack.
Yes, and we were pleased to see that bid. They've done a lot of airport work, and the lighting company is Precision Approach, which has done a lot of lighting work around airports around here.
Are they doing LED?
They're all LED. Everything is gonna be LED. And that's part of the next part with the state assisting. At first, we were talking about just doing the runway lights, and as we looked at our electrical system, it has taken a number of hits by lightning. And even though our taxiways were put in, lighting system was put in 1999, it was time, when we have that much work going on from one end to the other, it was time to do an upgrade. The efficiency of the LED, we hope, will help us tremendously. And I think, too, from a pilot perspective, the lighting, the LED is a little sharper light, should help the pilot see it amongst all the lights of the city. It should stand out a little bit brighter.
Chad, very briefly, you mentioned a partial shutdown of the runway.
Yes.
How much runway will still be available, roughly?
When we do the displaced threshold, I think we'll be at around 3,300 feet. And we've talked to, like, for example, MTSU with their King Air and things like that. That's sufficient for them to operate, even the charter operator. It's sufficient for them to operate. It's not the greatest, but they can operate. And MTSU shouldn't have a problem, and that keeps them going. And the whole idea of shutting down at night and displacement is to try to keep as much operations as we can as compared to one long, complete closure.
On that shutdown, how will other pilots coming into our airport, who normally just look at a book and say it's 3850 or whatever, how do they know that there's a partial shutdown of the runway?
There's a couple of different steps that we'll be taking. Yeah, one of them, as you approach Murfreesboro, is part of the bid in here includes the purchase of two big lit Xs that will be lit up at night. We will also be announcing this on our AWAS, our weather station that's on the airport, and it can give pilots messages. The third will be a NOTAM, which is an official system within the aviation community in which we, airports and pilots, give information about airport closures or airport conditions. So there's a number of different ways that we will be giving out that information. We'll also send out emails to the surrounding airports to let them know that, our schedule. And the NOTAMs, the notice, there'll be some very specific information, especially when we go to night closures or just displaced runway conditions. Thank you.
Mr. Gurke, in your landing approach, is it still white lights, right? Red lights, dead?
Yeah, we're gonna go from a VASI system to a PAPI system, which is very similar. You know, white over white, you'll fly all night. Red over red, you're dead. And red and white, you're right on board. Yes.
I think we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion is second. Any discussion? Ms. Schreik, we'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, the second part of this is then the follow-up with the Division of Aeronautics assisting us with the additional cost of this project. When we initially started, it was just a runway extension, and as we designed this work, working with aeronautics, working with our engineers, like I said, we talked about the lighting system needing to be completely redone. The state has reevaluated how they install lighting at our various airports. We do a direct burial of all the wires, which makes it very difficult in the future or at any time when you do have, say, a lightning strike or any problem with your lighting system, to have to dig up and find the problem somewhere, problem, out there in the field. So now we're going to a conduit system where we can bury all the conduit and then pipe the wire through there, which will make it much easier to fix, repair in the future, and protect those wires, along with making the whole system LED. And that's something the state has recently gone to as well. Other things that we found while doing the design is that the great thing about the Murfreesboro Airport is it's very flat. And the bad thing about the Murfreesboro Airport, it is really flat, so drainage was a big issue. So Atkins helped us look at our drainage system and saw that we were gonna have to put in quite a bit of concrete ditches. And also do work to make sure that we're working within the drainage system that's on the north end of town, because of some of the concerns there that we have, to work within that system. Also, the FAA has kinda changed the way our taxiways are designed and where they are located on the airport. And so we're having to take some of our taxiways that we had, that have worked for a lot of years, and move them and kinda reshape them to meet their latest compliance. And the other thing that we're doing is we're adding a taxiway echo, which will go into what is the old soccer fields. Our first customer, as you know, is Air Methods, and we feel that in the near future, there'll be other customers that will come into that area. And taxiway echo is that first route into that area. So with that, there was a number of changes. We've presented that to the aeronautics division. They approved that addition of $1,927,800 to the project, which brings us to a total of $5,051,800. And as you can see, our bids fell within that grant, leaving us a little bit of contingency for any issues that we might find out on the field.
One more question. What's the status on our lifeline area?
Well, right now, we're still working on the design. They have recently hired a wiser company to do the design of their area, out on that area. We are working right now that they'll be pulling onto the field in a very temporary basis while that construction is going on. And we have, through the excellent help of other city departments and Mr. Crumley, we've been able to get the pieces in place that they can pull onto the field, some trailers, have the helicopter here on the field, and operating out of Murfreesboro within a real short period of time.
Chad, I've heard from a couple of the residents in the Bradford Place area that they've seen what they thought might be additional water runoff recently. I know that with adding solid surface, like a runway, we're going to have less soil that can penetrate water. Will there be any retention or detention of water on your property, or are we simply going to? How is that being handled?
Okay, right now, the numbers that we have, we will not have to dig out anymore of the drainage area that's on the north end of the field. We are improving our ditch situation there. There's a lot of, what we're seeing is a lot of erosion and things occurring in our ditch system. So by doing this project, we feel like we're gonna be improving that quite a bit. It shouldn't have any impact on that because the city engineers did a really good job in the past designing that ditch system back there in preparation for airport expansion.
And our standards require that post-development runoff not exceed the pre-development runoff, so that'll be part of the review.
And also, Mr. Smotherman, Atkins did a really excellent job on preparing all of our stormwater management practices. And I think the mayor signed something about 10 days ago, and we already got the NOI back from the state. So they did an excellent job of documenting how they were gonna go about their management of the stormwater during the project.
If there's no other questions or comments, I'd move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Schreik, we'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
We'll consider for recommendations to the city manager with regards to approval of a contract with Scott Gravy doing business as the Fountains at Gateway.
Mayor McFarland and members of city council, I'm very pleased and excited to present this recommendation of the Gateway Commission to you this evening. The Fountains at Gateway is a mixed-use project in the gateway that's gonna include Class A office space. That Class A office space, the Chamberlain, I believe, can be a difference-maker in us attracting new jobs and potentially corporate headquarters. It also includes retail and restaurant uses as well as innovative public spaces. There really won't be anything like this project in Murfreesboro. So what Mr. Gravy is proposing is a speculative office building. You know, we've been successful in the gateway, but most of our projects there have been end-users. They had a specific footprint, architecture, and employees to come in and locate in the gateway. But one of the things that the community lacks in terms of inventory is significant space for the company who wants to move quickly. M-Tech, by way of comparison, had the time to take a year, year and a half to acquire the site, plan the site, build their corporate headquarters, and then move in. But there are other clients that approach the community that are maybe coming off a lease in another location, and they need to move quickly. And a project like this can allow that. And as I mentioned, we believe it can be a difference-maker. This 31 acres is located, it's the north corporate headquarters site. It's located adjacent to the Gateway Pond, and it's a three-phase project. Phase one includes a 100,000-square-foot office building. Now, the recent changes to the contract that were recommended by the Gateway Commission this week require Mr. Gravy to build the office building first. Now, he can build the retail and/or restaurant building simultaneous to the office building, but what this contract requires is the office building has to be going vertical as the first building out of the ground. In other words, to say it to the opposite, he can't just build retail buildings and not the office. The contract would not allow that. Phase one, Mr. Gravy would pay the city $5 per square foot, so that'll be an estimated $2.61 million. And what we looked at for the amount of sale for phase two and phase three, which phase two mirrors phase one, really goes back to the deal that was struck with M-Tech. As you recall, we donated the site for M-Tech because they were bringing the job. So what you'll see in your staff report and is in the contract are some metrics. That is, the number of jobs go up, and the average annual salary in the office buildings go up. There is a credit applied to the land sale price for the subsequent phases. So to the extent Mr. Gravy is successful in attracting very high-paying jobs, and lots of them, you know, he ultimately could see no land cost to him, then in that situation, we both win. We've landed great jobs that pay well. That's helped him get the next phase, which allows him to be creative with lease rates and attracting more office tenants. I should note that the job credit only applies to new jobs to the community. Simply moving jobs from one location in Murfreesboro to this project while it gets its building leased does not entitle him to a job credit. We're looking for jobs outside of the community for those to apply. You'll see on the screen, if folks from City TV can help, a color-coded map. We've got a hard copy in front of you as well. The contract that was approved by the Gateway Commission will refer to Phase 1A and Phase 1B. This document here illustrates that. Phase 1A is the office building. So if we get any questions, Mr. Ives will certainly be ready to help answer those. When we talk about in the contract, Phase 1A, it's the light yellow, meaning the office building. Phase 1B would be the retail and the restaurant. Likewise, the same scenario over 2A and 2B. What's really innovative about this project is the public space between the buildings. Mr. Gravy has traveled to a number of projects to say, what did they do that might set this project apart? So having that first floor retail, public seating areas, sound system, LED lighting, potentially even a stage that could, you know, have some entertainment at Christmas time or around holidays, where he could even change the color of the LED lighting. I think he's really trying to think out of the box to create a space that says to a company, I have several choices, but this is different, and it's cool and it's hip, and this is where I wanna be. So I really wanna compliment him for the amount of time and attention to detail that he's put to his design. His design review, actually, has made all the way through the planning commission. He is on a very tight timetable based on a land sale he achieved in Nashville to reinvest his funds. So he's gonna be incentivized to go quickly. Let me pause right there and see if you have any questions, and I'll be glad to go over some of the performance requirements placed on Mr. Gravy. Any questions so far?
Let's have a real quick one. The credits, because it's a credit, means that you can't go beyond free, right?
Correct. Yeah, we're, yeah, correct. So we, when you, as you saw in the contract, we really tried to create the performance criteria at three different levels. The first had to do with a building permit. The second kind of milestone mark was the going vertical, and lastly was a certificate of occupancy. We wanted to make sure that he had to make reasonable progress, and that if it stalled in one place, the city, you know, would have clawback provisions up to it, including canceling the Phase 2 and Phase 3 options. So we believe we've set it up in a way that gives him an opportunity to build and be successful, but he will have to perform. I know Mr. Gravy, I think, has got some renderings, and if there weren't any other questions on the contract, it might be helpful for you to see the architecture and layout of the building.
This shows the initial building, the office building, 100,000 square foot, that you could see on the yellow portion of the design that was up earlier. This is an artist rendering of what the finished product looks like when all the phases are built out, and it shows the promenade down the middle of the boulevard being 150-foot wide, where we'll have, place to have different events or concerts, musical events. We have a lot of ideas about that. I'll take any questions if you've got any other ones.
It is very attractive.
It is, and I tell you, I've seen this presentation a couple times through the planning commissions, as well as Doug has, and we are really excited about this project. From my perspective, I think this is a game-changer for the city of Murfreesboro to have turnkey Class A office space available. It's huge. And the retail side of it, I know some of the names that were mentioned on the buildings in the presentation we were given. I know there's no guarantees on those, but even those were exciting. I guess the 1B presentation will be based on, that growth will be determined by the acquisition of a restaurant that desires to be in that location. Is that correct? by the acquisition of a, a restaurant that desires to be in that location. Is that correct?
The one B will be driven by leasing, which I think will be driven by office users. I think that's going to kind of follow that sequence because these will be more specialty shops, restaurants, service businesses, hair salon, those types of businesses.
And in taking a look at, you know, how to, to structure this, our key interest in this has, has been the office and, and the jobs. The restaurant and retail are important, but really, the driving force here is the office. So in discussions with Mr. Gravy and what we've tried to memorialize here, he may build one A, the office building, and maybe the right tenants haven't come forward for one B, the restaurant and retail. He may move over to phase two and build office building number two. I believe that then just creates more of a critical mass that may force the, you know, the construction of the retail and restaurant on one A and then one B. But it's not locked where he just has to do everything in one A before moving over to one B because it's about the jobs. We certainly don't want to, you know, hold up, have a restaurant hold up an office building in our particular situation.
And it is exciting to look at the, the use of the breezeways and stuff between the buildings because they will be used for entertainment, they'll be used for activities within the community. And I've heard bands mention, I don't know at what level it's going to, the entrance to it has a pond on either side of it with fountains on it. And it's just, it's a fantastic opportunity, I think, for, for the city of Murfreesboro to bring, again, a Class A office space that will attract the type of jobs that we're looking for. And, and I hate to use the term, but it's Maryland Farmish. And it, it's really, and this is something that Murfreesboro needs and will be a real asset to our community.
Scott, thanks a lot for working with us and with the ideas and being creative and of course, making sure everything was, was tight contractually and all that kind of stuff. I appreciate you willing, you know, to work with us. And best of luck. I'm really excited about it. Should be great.
Ms. McGannon, are you satisfied with the legal ease that's been put into all this?
Yes, because I'm satisfied with Mr. Oives and Mr. Lyons respectively.
Anyway, and that, that was, you know, part of the challenge here. This is a bold vision. It's ambitious. I think it's going to be an awesome win for the community. When you write contracts, however, you've got to think about the worst-case scenario. And so, you know, we don't want to sound doomsday, but we did need to deal with, you know, those clawback provisions. I don't expect those to come into play, but if we get a couple years down the road, we want to feel like the taxpayer and the city were protected. So, you know, depending on the scenario about whether something was built or not, you know, the city, you know, would, could reacquire the land, Mr. Gravy would be out some, some site prep costs, or we would cancel, you know, future phases. But again, I think, you know, the interest is there. This market's red hot. All of Middle Tennessee is red hot. And I think having that speculative office space, if it's there, he'll fill it up and we'll be talking about the next building and, and another ribbon cutting. So I think we've tried to take a pretty good approach to, you know, both protect the city, protect the taxpayers, but not write it in an oppressive way where Mr. Gravy couldn't be successful. You know, there's an element of risk in anything you do, but, you know, we've tried to take that in a measured approach, and we think this can be a huge win for Murfreesboro.
Look, I was going to make a quick comment that, you know, part of Mr. Gravy's vision started back, I don't know how many, many months ago, but I went to a ribbon cutting and Mr. Gravy opened up and repurposed a building that were the, next to where the goodness gracious used to be on Northfield, and really took something that Murfreesboro had not seen in a vision. And from that time to this point, he has been as passionate as any person that I think the city has dealt with about bringing something that is second to none into this community. And I want to personally tell you thank you not only for your vision and what this is going to do for Murfreesboro, but really for pushing the city and all of us to think outside the box. And I think that's what you've done here. And it's going to really show not only Murfreesboro in a good light, but it's going to show your vision and what you see for, for your project. I hope we're here two or three years from now looking at approving site plans where there have been many, many jobs that have been brought in. And I hope that we do have the rest of the property, that, that we do have lots of job credits that come back to you. So I just want to applaud you for the vision that you and your team have put forward in making this something that's not just a hundred thousand square foot, square building that we're hoping to attract. It's really going to be a, a community feel, which is what, what Murfreesboro is.
In more than thirty years in the real estate industries, I've never had a project that captured my imagination like this one has. And everybody I've spoken to, it's, it's like it's captured their imagination. And I think it's because all of us realize Murfreesboro's got some incredible untapped potential. And this gives us a route to start tapping some of that. And I think it's going to be an exciting project, and I can't wait.
I'm going to make a motion to approve, Mr. Gravy, you know, we talked, and, and I'm excited about that particular project. Thank you and Hearthstone for stepping out on faith, is what I'm calling it, because we know the competitive market around here would, you know what I'm talking about. And, and nobody really, has really been looking to Murfreesboro, or this, even Smyrna, for a project of this nature. And appreciate you stepping out there, man, on faith. And I'm really excited about this particular project. Coming on board. So I will move to approve the recommendation.
I second that vision.
Motion is second.
Very good.
Ms. Wright, we call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We'll now move into beer permits.
None tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Do you have a list of statements that Mr. Smotherman has looked at and laid upon a?
And after intense review, I know we've all looked at this, this is serious. I'll make the motion that we pay the bills.
Second.
Motion is second to pay the bills. Ms. Wright.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. No boarding commission appointments. Mr. Lyons, do we have any other business from staff or city council?
None from staff.
The only thing I would say after we have looked at a project like this is, I think, something that we'll talk about in the future that we will, Mr. Gravy has pushed us and now we push, is what's next. With that, we'll stand adjourned.